Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have six members of the council present tonight, a quorum, and that Councilman Toomey is excused tonight. With that then, we will have our opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Buehler.
Thank you, Mayor. With the government shutdown in Washington DC and the legislature of the state of Utah about to go into session, I've been thinking a lot about government and our service here on the city council. And I -- we do have on the back table these little pamphlets about the city council that explain our form of government and what we do and who we are. And I've prepared some remarks that I just want to take a minute and read that may be interesting or maybe not interesting, but hopefully they won't be too long and may be interesting at least to many scouts or others who wonder why we are different than other governing bodies. Having observed politics and government in other places and arenas, I want to express how fortunate I believe we are that this city council is independent, free to judge and make decisions as each of us sees fit. We are not promoted, supported, or elected by political parties, nor do we owe any allegiance or have any commitment to a party platform or position. We have the great privilege and responsibility of serving the residents, and it is to them only that we owe our best ideas, consideration, and effort. We each have an equal opportunity to speak, to promote ideas, to argue against the ideas of another, to explore alternative solutions, and to vote according to our individual conscience. To the great benefit of our city, this city council is not hampered, constrained, or divided by factions, voting blocs, alliances, or quid pro quo. We do not trade votes amongst ourselves, nor do we exert any pressure whatsoever upon our fellow council members to vote in lockstep or risk a loss of political capital as a consequence of a particular vote. We are each independently able to vote on every issue that comes before us, one issue at a time, free of any political weighing of favors or threats. Observers of our work, those that come here regularly, will notice that often our votes are unanimous. I believe that results from thorough discussion, individual thoughtfulness, and in many cases, common goals and a common vision for our city. Other times, we did not vote unanimously. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was the sole vote against an overwhelming majority on a particular issue. That happens sometimes. Sometimes somebody else might be in the minority. I have observed that we all vote with and vote against the majority from time to time. The theory is that if at least four of us will vote together for a particular item, then even though it may be a close question, we have probably made a safe and defensible decision as a city council. I believe that theory works in democratic representative government such as this. All I ask of my fellow council members is to express themselves so that if we do not have a unanimous vote, I can hear all arguments, pro and con. Then when I vote, I can do so with confidence that I am on what I believe is the right side of that particular fence. I mention this tonight for three reasons. First, it is a new year and a fresh start in our personal lives and in city government. Second, I do not want to see the battle lines, body counts, and political factions and divisiveness we see in other governing bodies. And third, we as a city council are about to embark on our annual strategic planning meeting, which is more or less a brainstorming session to explore all the great ideas we have had and those we have received over the past year from the residents. It is a great and equal opportunity to freely and independently share ideas and assign priorities in the common goal of trying to do the best we can for the residents we serve. And I would just conclude by saying how very thankful I am for the opportunity to work for my neighbors in this city. And with that, I invite you all to stand and repeat pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we recognize special visitors. Typically, those are scouts. And so it looks like we may have, I assume that's more than one group, and if not, it's a big group. So we typically invite one of your young men to come up and introduce your troop or pack by number, not necessarily to introduce each person, but to introduce the group, and then maybe what school you attend and what you're doing here tonight. You're probably working on some sort of a, maybe a merit badge, maybe an activity badge, something, so just let us know that. But we do ask you to come up to the microphone, one of your young men.
We're at Troop 628. We're here to earn, or one of the requirements for the citizens in the community, merit badge, and we come from different schools. I'm from Granger. He, we got Hunter. We got people from, one of my fellows is from Monticello Academy, and then Westlake Junior High, and Fox Hills, and Farnsworth Elementary.
Wow, a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And the next one?
My name is Bryn, and our pack number is 3951. We're working on building a better world. And we go to Diamond Ridge Elementary.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. And let's see, there's another one? Come on up.
I'm Gideon Lemon, and I've come by myself, but I am from Troop 947, and I am working on the communications merit badge, and I go to Benning Junior High School.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others we missed? Well, welcome to all of you. With that then, we'll continue on our agenda. No other elected officials, sometimes we have visitors, but not tonight. Let's see, the minutes of January 8th from our previous council meeting, we need a motion on the minutes from the council. Move to approve the minutes of January 8th. Second. Any discussion?
Any.
Nope. Then, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. And next, we go to a great part of our agenda. This one will be the presentation of a Good Samaritan Award, and we will turn to Councilmember Jake Fiti-Simano to make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We are very proud to present a Good Samaritan Award today. We'd invite Mr. Salvador Colorado to come up and join Chief Colleen Jacobs from West Valley City Police Department. I'm going to go ahead and read this nomination, after which the chief will present this award. On September 7th, 2018, Cecilia Milla had just returned home to her apartment building at 3063 West, 3500 South after visiting her sister, and was collecting her things as she was exiting her vehicle. When Cecilia turned, there was a man whose face was covered with a bandana staring her in the face while holding a hunting knife. The man demanded money and her phone or anything of value. Cecilia did not have anything that the man wanted, and in fear for her life, she began screaming. Cecilia's screams attracted the attention of a 15-year-old boy, Salvador Colorado, who was jogging along 3500 South. Salvador saw the man threatening Cecilia with a knife, grabbed the suspect from behind, and threw him to the ground, then put himself between the suspect and Cecilia. The suspect got up, thrust the knife at the boy, then took off running away from the apartment. Fortunately, no one was hurt. Officers were in the area quickly, but no suspect was located. Thanks to the quick and heroic actions of Salvador, Cecilia was spared potential injury as well as theft of her property. West Valley City and the West Valley City Police Department would like to extend to Salvador Colorado a most sincere expression of our gratitude for taking quick and heroic actions to help the person in need. Salvador, I believe your mother is here. Do you have anyone else here to help you commemorate tonight? That's good.
Alfred, thank you. Appreciate that, and it's good to see and recognize positive things that happen in our community. Too much of what we hear on the national news is negative, and it's a reality of life, but it's nice to have these very positive ones that turn out well in the end. With that then, we'll move on our agenda. We next have our public comment period. We have some people who have signed up. And we mentioned that our public comment period is designed specifically to allow our citizens to give us information or comments. It is not and cannot be a discussion. By state law, we start discussing any policy in our meetings. It must be on our agenda in order to protect the public, that we do everything in open and with notice in advance so that we don't do something, a discussive issue, when people don't know about it. So you're welcome to speak on anything that you want, but as a council, once in a while we might offer a very brief comment. It's not necessarily that we're not interested, but we are not discussing that. In fact, some of these items, we do take note of, and we place them on our subsequent agenda to raise in our study meeting for the next week. So with that introduction, and by the way, it's not question and answer, nothing, it's just your time, you use it, and, yes, and if some of you are here to speak on the public hearing, on the application on recreational vehicles and boats, we will have a separate public hearing on that. So if that's what you're here for, don't use this time. We'll get to you shortly, okay? And some of you may have signed this list, and if so, just say, "Oh, I'll wait for the next thing there." Christine Martin?
Okay.
Wait, okay.
Thank you.
Scott Baum?
I'll wait.
Okay. Ken Martin?
I'll wait.
Okay. Then is there anyone else here who wanted to take just a couple of minutes to speak on an issue? Seen none. Okay. We'll close our regular public comment. Then, Mr. City Manager, any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Counsel? So now, we go to the next item on our public, or on our agenda, which is a public hearing. This is regarding application ZT-6-2018. That is for an ordinance amendment to limit where recreational vehicles and boats can park within front yards. In conjunction with that, we will also address the ordinance 19-01 to amend our code. Now, this particular proposal has had a lot of discussion, and many proposals were made, but we finally ended up with the following in the proposed language. And that is that recreational vehicles and boats will only be parked in front of a garage or a carport or other portion of the front yard that's not directly in front of the house. But there is a provision that parked recreational vehicles and boats shall not overlap more than four feet of the front of the house excluding the garage and carport. So if you can just about fit it, and you can overlap just a little bit, but not more than four feet, then it can be parked there. So that is the basis of this item. With that introduction, we'll now open a public hearing and invite those of you who are here to speak to this to come forward, and we'll hear what you have to say. You have, oh, I guess on this one you'll open.
Don't I get a few minutes? Don't want me to take half an hour, right?
Well, it's
Probably not.
I would be surprised if you could talk a half an hour.
Oh, I don't know, I could, but hopefully you don't want me to. No, my name is Christine Martin, and I live at 3216 South, excuse me, 4610 West, and I have been to lots of meetings, and I want to tell you they've been very educational. Thank you for this. And I do have a recreational vehicle, and it is parked in front of my house, and it is three and a half feet. So I've just been to these meetings where it has gone from side to side to front to side to create diagonal, and my only question was why we had to do this in the first place, but that's up to you guys, not me. And I have found that I probably need to be more active in city government. That's one of my goals. And thank you for your time and attention to this matter and to listening to us, because in the very, very beginning, we did not fit at all. So I appreciate you listening to what we as a public had to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Next?
It's getting to the point I don't think I'm going to introduce myself anymore. My name is Scott Baum, and I live at 3332 Stanton Drive. And like the Martins, I've been to a lot of these meetings to discuss, and I wanted to thank you as a council for listening to us and for listening to the planning commission, and for allowing us to participate in city government. I remember when I was these young men's age, and I went to my first city council meeting, it was when, I believe it was when West Jordan was first made a city, and our scout leader took us to that city council meeting. And it definitely had an impact on me, trying to discuss things like this and understanding how government works. And again, I just wanted to say thank you for the compromise, for, you know, after seeing all the different ways that's come before you, that it's great to see that we were able to compromise and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Ken Martin. I live at 3216 South, 4610 West, and you've all seen my property multiple times. Again, I would like to agree with the other two. Thank you for your efforts and the compromise. I still don't understand the justification of why, and, but I guess I don't need to. I'm just in the mode of, again, my background's engineering, and when I lay something out, I have a specific function and a specific reason, whether it be moving organs around such that it doesn't, they don't get over radiated, or something like that. That's what we're about. I still don't understand that. And maybe that's just my engineering, and yes, I think different than my wife. That's part of it. But again, thank you for your efforts. Thank you for working with us, and it's been an interesting ride. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next? Anyone else? I knew there were the three. No one else to speak to this issue? Okay, then we'll close the public input portion. We'll bring it back to the council. I think I will just mention two things. One is, two of them mentioned, "Why would we address this issue?" And that's because we listen to people in the community. These are often brought up by members of the community, an idea or a concept. It doesn't mean it always goes through, but many times we feel the need to address it in detail, explore it, and give feedback. And ultimately, that is what government should be about, that people can come and present ideas. And we've had a number of people in just our regular public comment period come and provide information that we have subsequently discussed. Sometimes it works out, and we take action. Sometimes we do not. But everyone has the right to bring that up to their council members, their elected officials. So although you, some individuals obviously have different ideas, and we've had one recently on animals, and we've had discussions on that. We've had discussions on chickens, and people were on both sides of that issue. And so, you know, it's just hopefully the way government should work. The other thing is, yes, please, stay more involved. We would love to have more people come and make comment. As you saw in our regular public comment period, there weren't very many. So the more people are involved, the more they interact with their elected officials, the better that we are able to represent you. With that then, we've closed the public hearing portion. We bring it back to the council now for any comments or motions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that, those comments, and also thank you for reading those two sentences of the proposed ordinance change. With that, I was going to volunteer to do that just because of the many variations that it's had. I want to make sure that people understood what we were actually considering tonight. And with that, I'm happy to move for approval of ordinance 19-01, the first ordinance of the year.
It's properly before us. Any further discussion or comments? Seen none. I will now turn to our city recorder for a roll call vote, and for the benefit of the scouts, that is one of the requirements we have in state law, is that it must be a roll call vote. So minutes don't matter, but when we take substantial action, we do have to.
Councilman Fiti-Simano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed with unanimity.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent calendar. Our consent calendar consists of items that are typically non-controversial, very easy, and very routine. So what you will see on the six items that we have on the consent agenda, resolutions, 1901, the first one again of the new year, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. The first two are dealing with the easement to get some sidewalks put in on a new road that's been put in, and this is a follow-up to that. And so we put in a public sidewalk lighting utility easement on some property at 5544 West, 2400 South. The other four are on along 2700 West, and it seems like in our meetings now for the last number of weeks, we have had some of these come forward. There are a lot of homes there we're doing a beautification project, and these are, some are perpetual easements. There are also temporary construction easements, as we put in things that we sometimes have to step onto people's property, make that work. And so we get their permission. So these four are just different ones. Along 2700 West, they're fairly routine. So we oftentimes just lump those together and make one vote. So hopefully covered that and also gave you some information. And if you think we should talk more about some of these, understand that some of these items, in fact, all of them essentially, we have a study meeting, and we held this for this one last week and discussed in detail many of these items. So, but we have to take final action here in this meeting, but we can talk about it in other public meetings. So with that, to the council.
Mayor, I move to accept the six resolutions on the consent agenda.
Second. Property before us. Any further comments? Seen none. To our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiti-Simano?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed with unanimity.
Thank you. Now, for our regular city council meeting, that concludes our business. But we also function in other capacities. We will have one more meeting after this that deals with a very important issue and a very large issue. And let's see, because you'll be doing that. So, but we're going to conclude. I don't conduct that meeting, so my part is finished in conducting. So a motion for this meeting to end.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Were adjourned. Unanimously. Thank you. I call to order the special meeting of the building authority, and note that we've had an opening ceremony, and our chairman, Mr. Tom Hune, is excused tonight. We have just one item of business. It's a public hearing, and Mr. Pyle, will you please introduce this?
Yes, sir, thank you. So on the one item of the agenda, the special building authority agenda we have tonight, is a parameters resolution that would allow for moving forward with the building of a public works and parks building for our maintenance operations for both of those departments. The parameters resolution is noted as being at the amount of nineteen and a half million dollars. I should note that this is a potential and far above what we think the actual project's cost will be. We're projecting that construction cost to be at about fifteen and a half million dollars, however, for purposes of being able to move forward in changing environment if things were to change, such as construction costs, interest rates, those sorts of things. That's why you adopt a parameters resolution that allows for a higher amount. And that's all.
Thank you. Anything that the board would like to add before we open the public hearing? All right. I hereby open the public hearing to accept input regarding the issuance and sale of these revenue bonds. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Calvin Force. I live at 4015 South Starwood Street, West Valley City, just off 40th and 4100 South. I didn't have a chance to actually look at the agenda beforehand, but since you brought this up, I'm going to just say a few words on this. I know just early, late last year, I come and got in front of the board about some of the ills of the construction industry, and so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that be aware of it. I know it's hard for this body to kind of track that, but that's, I get that answer all over town. It is tough. There's a lot of kind of dirty players out there. I've seen it on schools. I've seen it on public works. I've seen it on private industry. It really doesn't matter. It's just the way that the contractor, the general contractor then goes to the subcontractor, and then he goes to a second-tier sub, and he's basically paying guys under the table. And that's worker misclassification. It's tax fraud. It's all kinds of just nasty things. And I would hate for, for the good citizens of West Valley City's money going into these projects to be mishandled like that. I realize it's not, it's not the council that's doing it, but it is the people that they deal with. they deal with. You know, kind of the guys down under the table, the things on the bottom of your shoe. It's kind of, it's bad, and it's getting worse all over town, all over the state, and it's affecting an industry and a, and a way of life that has supported my family for generations. So I, I will, I will be in touch, I'll be here. So I would just like you to know. So I'd like more discussion on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak regarding these bonds? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We're not taking any action on this right now, and so that concludes our business for the building authority. Move to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.